Allow me and indulge me a moment. There's one of the things that I put in place a couple, well, more than a couple of years ago. I love involvement from our citizens in their town government, right? And I had someone come to me one day and said, you know, "I'd really like to be mayor, but I don't want to go through the whole election process. How can I become mayor?" Right? So I came up with this idea called Mayor for a Day that we do with local charities. And that is it gives them the opportunity to auction off the ability for someone to be mayor for a day. Now here's the kind of misnomer on it. When I first brought it up to Jim Maloney, our attorney, he grabbed at his chest, fell to the ground, what's going on? And then we figured out a way to allow our citizens who participate and support local nonprofits the ability to come up and do some kind of fun stuff that our charter legally allows them to do without like, you can't come up and change the name of Parker to like Mike Land or anything like that. But there are little things that you can do. So I started this program of these Mayor for Days to have it signed in auctions for charities. And it's been pretty cool and it's also been pretty humbling because, you know, sometimes they bid up really high and sometimes nobody bids up. So it, you know, it just depends. But we are really lucky because at Ave Maria School, apparently the winner, Mary Joyce, who is a seven-year-old in second grade at Ave Maria, won getting to be mayor for the day today. So Mary Joyce, would you come up here real quick? I asked her why she didn't wear her beard though tonight. She laughed and you liked that? Guys, it's okay to laugh at these jokes, they're okay. Come on up here, Mary Joyce. So before we get started, I wanted to introduce you, Mary Joyce, to everyone out there. So everybody, say hi to Mary Joyce.
Hi.
Mary Joyce, say hi to everybody. See, she's gonna giggle through this. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna come up here, she's gonna sit on my seat, but most importantly, we have the town charter, which is like our constitution, it's a big old book, because you're a little bit shorter than I am. So I'm gonna put that charter on your seat, you get to sit on our charter while you get to be mayor. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
All right, so come on up here sweetheart, let's do this. All right. You don't wear my glasses, you don't need glasses, you're young. You're young, okay. So here's our town charter, see this big book? These are all of our laws, okay? Let's put that right here. All right, ready? Do I have permission to lift up and set on it? Okay, come here, ready sweetie? One, two, three, oh, all right. Hold on tight, I'm gonna bring you in close. Okay, now here's the microphone. Here's, you giggle, I don't give a shit. Here's the first thing you have to do, okay, I'm gonna tell you what to do. Now, so go ahead and grab that gavel, okay? Your left hand?
I don't know.
Kind of a little ball, I don't know. Use one hand, if you use two hands, it's like Thor, and we don't want to do that because we might break something, okay? So the first thing you're gonna do is hit the gavel, no, okay, I didn't say tickle it, I should hit it.
I did.
Hit it hard. There you go, now say, "I reconvene..."
I reconvene.
"...the Parkertown Council..."
The Parkertown Council.
"...meeting for January 7th."
Meeting for January 7th.
Perfect, that was fantastic. Now, say, "Please join me in the pledge of allegiance."
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, so let me scoot you out. Everyone's gonna stand up. There's the flag, so you get to start, so, ready? You go.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then everyone claps for you. Okay, good job, man, you're a pro at this. Okay, so now the next part up we have is special presentations, and you're actually the special presentation. But just to make sure, I want you to say, "Miss Kivela..."
Miss Kivela.
"...do we have any other special presentations?"
Do we have any other special presentations?
No mayor, we do not.
So then, ooh, we get to go to the next item, next item, so say, "Next item is Parker Chamber of Commerce."
Next item is Parker Chamber of Commerce.
Say, "Is there anyone from the Parker Chamber of Commerce here?"
Is there anyone from the Parker Chamber of Commerce here?
And then say, "Looks like no."
Looks like no.
All right, good, so now we're gonna go to the next item. So say, "Is there anyone from the Downtown Business Alliance here?"
Is there anyone...
From the?
From the Downtown Alliance here.
Madam Mayor, I spoke to Shelley Mango today and she's not gonna make it tonight, but she wished me to pass on Happy New Year to everybody and remind you and the council that we, they have a meeting, uh, January the ninth at, uh, the library.
Say, "Thank you very much, Councilman Rivera."
Thank you very much, Councilman Rivera.
All right, excellent, that's how you get to be mayor to the, for tonight. Everybody give her a big round of applause. Because the next stuff we have to do, you actually have to be elected to do, so while you're walking down with me, I'm gonna ask some questions to everyone in the audience. Did you know that there are only three requirements to be the mayor of Parker? You wanna guess what those three requirements are? If you don't wanna guess, I don't blame you. Who can guess for me, one of those items?
Need a beard.
Need a beard, you think so? No, you don't. You have to be eighteen years older, older.
You're a Parker resident.
You have to have lived in the town of Parker for at least a year. And the other is you have to be a legal electorate, which means you're registered to vote, right? But if you notice, I didn't say you have to be a boy or a girl, or rich or poor, or short or tall, or smart or dumb, or skinny or fat, or any of that stuff, right? So we can all have an opportunity to represent our government. So here, what I have for you, my dear, this is a certificate for you. Certificate of recognition honorary mayor for the day awarded to Mary Joyce Landry today, January 7th, signed by me. So congratulations. Are you gonna stay through the whole meeting? First opportunity down? All right.
Do I recognize the dad?
What's that?
Do I recognize the dad?
I'm going to, so for those of you who've been around for a little bit, her dad not only has a sweet beard, but Mr. Landry used to be an employee of the town of Parker. Um, in fact, you were here when I got elected on council, I think you were, you've been here, you were here a long, 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 long time, so. And they go to Ave Maria, which is the church I go to as well, so fantastic, good seeing you guys. All right, next item up on our agenda is public comment. These are, uh, items, this is general public comment, so this is an opportunity for you to come up and address council on items that are not on our agenda. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, there will be public comment at that time for that item. There is a three-minute time limit on public comment, you can see there's a clock above me, and there's a clock against the wall that says the same thing. I'll hit a button, after you give your name and address, and your time starts down. When you get to zero, I'm not being rude, but I'm gonna say thank you very much and ask the next person to come up for public comment. No action will be taken on these items for general public comment, it's just an opportunity for you to place a comment. So with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:14 PM if there's anyone wishing to address Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Corey Nelson, my address is 21398 East Wanderlust Place, Parker, Colorado, 80138.
All right.
I live in the Iowa neighborhood. Uh, good evening, congratulations to our new council members and re-elected ones, that's nice to see everybody here. I just have the three small items to talk about. First of all, uh, I've been appointed by the Douglas County Sheriff, uh, to be a part of his Public Safety Advisory Committee. I previously talked to council on a work study, uh, about issues involving school resource officers. Uh, part of us are trying to get in front of the, uh, county commissioners and proposal to take a portion of the sunsetting Justice Center sales tax and re-convert that to a school security sales tax. Uh, we were thinking, just a few months ago, that we may have to go, uh, and go through a petition process to get on the ballot. Well, we've been doing some work behind the scenes, and now we believe that we will have support from two of our county commissioners. So we'll be working with the sheriff's office to do a presentation here soon before the county commissioners, and we'll hopefully get that on the ballot in 2019. So I wanna give you that, that good news update. Uh, the second issue I wanted to talk about was just quickly RTD, I've not had any feedback from our public media from our RTD folks, I hope to contact them again and ask, okay, what were you gonna do for us? Because Representative Kim Ransum says she will be more than happy to carry a bill, uh, for the town of Parker on whether or not we should extend the RTD tax district to the entire boundaries of the, of the town, or completely withdraw, uh, from RTD tax district. I think at nineteen million dollars, we're getting gypped, as far as the services we're getting from RTD, and I'd like to see them actually do better, but if they're not, I think we could do without that tax, personally. And finally, I just wanna make one last comment, and that is, I know you're going through a town charter review process, and some of you, I talked to you, who went running for election, and I'm encouraging that the council review and consider, uh, putting before a change in our town charter specifically addressing our municipal court. I think it's very important that whoever our municipal judge is, number one, should be held to a retention vote of the people, and also should be therefore also be required to be a resident of the town. So I'm encouraging those two changes for our town charter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Corey. And you had fifty-two seconds left, which I don't think you've ever not used all of your time, so that's pretty good for you, brother.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment, this is your opportunity. Come on down. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Mayor, Council, Dave Usechak, 12713 Buckhorn Creek Street. At what point are you in the town going to consider desires of neighborhoods in comparison to seeking input from the community on your beloved downtown? I recognize your pro-business philosophy since the majority of town's operating budget comes from sales tax. I also recognize the business standpoint is to generate as much traffic for the business to survive. At what point does Parker have sufficient mixed-use units that are impacting the quality of life in Parker? In 2018, Parker had over eighty more mixed-use units than single-family units, which brings more customers to your business plan. Does the town have no consideration for the quality of life and impact traffic is having on the community? Does the town have no consideration in the parking issues that the beloved downtown has impacting the quality of life of Parker? Are you given data on the spending habits of mixed-use occupants compared to single-family units, which are contributing greater to your pro-business plan? It will have an impact on already traffic issues confronting Parker. You sought input from the community on your downtown vision, but failed to accept input from the community on issues facing their neighborhood. Why? Have you explored all options to support the town's dwindling budget other than seeking more businesses or construction revenue as your current practice? Don't let money destroy the quality of life in Parker if you wanna keep that town feeling. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Next up for public comment? All right, seeing none, well, oh, come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ron Meyer, 12888 Ironstone Lane. I wanna welcome the new town council members. I think you're gonna be a breath of fresh air. The Stro Ranch, Ironstone neighborhood voted very heavily for the two of you in the recent We did so due to your positions on managing growth, budget, and planning. Because of the success we had in getting out the vote in the neighborhood, um, and what the neighborhood views as a dereliction of duty in the town, uh, town planning department and by the town attorney, we plan to again meet, but most likely exceed our get-out-the-vote activities in 2020. So the formerly sleepy neighborhood of Stro Ranch will spend the next two years with eyes and ears wide open, we will become more vocal, continue to be activists. Of immediate concern is the lack of a well-thought-out and comprehensive town planning department. We also don't understand the current budget constraints. Expect us to vigorously follow the money, ensure the town of Parker is efficient in how it spends money, and actually gets return on its investments in TIF, P3, tax breaks, annexations, um, all the things that can put a stress on current resources. Again, congratulations to the new council members, but please follow through on the agenda that got you elected.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, next up for public comment? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, folks. Um, my name is RJ O'Connor, I live at 19085 East Oak Creek Place. I begin my comments tonight congratulating Jeff Toborg and Cheryl Pogue on their election. They chose to run for these positions because of their love for our town and the significant problems our town is currently facing. They begin their time on the council at a time of great importance, unfortunately not in a very positive way. Our town is approaching a crisis in a planning department, there has been an explosion of multifamily development in this town, and yet infrastructure appears to have been all but ignored. It is very clear the past members of this council are of the belief that density is the only way to grow this town out of its budgetary problems. The idea that simply adding bodies to our population in hopes they will spend money here, increasing sales tax revenue, has clearly been a failure. Our town is millions of dollars in the hole, and the one answer to fixing that problem? To cut a seventeen thousand dollar carriage Christmas ride. Something that's become a bit of a tradition in our town, that cut was an embarrassment. Town Administrator Michelle Cavella, in a December 2018 article in the Parker Chronicle, said, "The town is experiencing a lower revenue growth requiring the town to be more efficient with its expenses." How is this even possible in an economy that is growing around the country, our state, and even our town at unprecedented levels? The major reason Mr. Toborg and Ms. Pogue were elected, our new council members have openly expressed their plans to our community and how they hope to fix this. And I hope the rest of the council and town leadership understand that their electoral victory isn't just politics, it's a clear message to everyone in this building that all of us deserve better. There have been hundreds and hundreds of new apartments added to this city, town, sorry, town. Why? The occupancy rates for these apartments are abysmally low and getting worse, even with new information that was posted on the town website recently. And yet the previous council, members of planning, and others continue to push for more. It's damaging our neighborhoods. How many people in this town know that the Pine Bluffs development is grossly beyond what was approved and sanctioned not only by the town, but the residents who live in that area? And the town's response was, "Oh, well, we're just gonna let it happen." There's an apartment complex on the north side of Vines across from O'Brien Park, it has a shutdown order for some reason. There's been discussion that has something to do with proximity to childcare, okay? We have a development that is in litigation right now in Stro Ranch. Again, nothing but irregularities from all of this, and it is my hope and is the hope of hundreds, if not thousands, of voters, that all of you take the advice and look toward the leadership that these two fantastic individuals bring to the council.
Thank you, RJ. Next up for public comment? Come on up, yep. You don't have to raise your hand, you can just come on down.
Great, I've got a sheet too, if anyone wants that.
You just leave it right up. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Mike Coon, I live at 19026 East Hickock Drive. Uh, so, uh, I'm here to show opposition also to the dominium development, uh, and it moving forward within Stro Ranch. I, uh, will say it, that I'm concerned about property values for that surrounding area. So, this is not what I do for a living, I'm not an attorney, uh, and thank you all for serving and, uh, and helping to drive this community. Uh, but I personally feel, after attending numerous meetings, that, eh, things are being rubber stamped based on, well, it's in the town charter to develop multifamily, this plot of land is developed for, or designed for multifamily. Without any further consideration of its impact. We haven't heard anything, I haven't heard, read, anything from the town on what's been done for impact of properties. You've been given information that it will impact properties, but we have heard zero response. We've heard, it's in the, it's in the town charter. We feel like we're fighting you, you invited us to come here. We've shown up in spades. That is, the town people, voters, telling you, "We don't want this here, we want you to look closer, tell us why it should be there." Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next up for public comment? Again, you don't have to raise hand, anything, you just come on down. Okay? Seeing none? All right, we'll close public comment at 7:26 PM and move on to the next item, which is reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Mr. Diack?
Uh, thank you, mayor, Happy New Year to everybody, uh, thanks for coming out. Um, over the holiday season, I think, uh, I did as most people, I, I spent time with family. I did have a couple of meetings, we talked about, at the regional level and county level, about, uh, alternative funding, transportation, or transportation funding, uh, what to do with 109, Proposition 109, and Proposition 110, the defeats of that. Are there any ways to, to find additional revenue streams to, uh, improve infrastructure not only within Parker, within Douglas County, but, uh, across this Denver metro region? Thank you.
Debbie?
I was out of town, and all of my meetings start up again this, next week.
Okay, Renee? It was like you're eight feet tall.
Um, I was out of town enjoying the holidays, and I hope everybody else did the same.
Jeff, anything you wanna add?
Uh, thank you, Happy New Year, everyone, thank you for the very warm comments and welcome from the, uh, members of Stro, I appreciate it very much.
Cheryl?
Yeah, thank you too for your support, I do strive to do what I vowed to do for the election, so I hope that helps. But at the same time, we haven't been appointed to our committees yet, so we haven't been assigned to attend any, but that's coming on Friday, so I'll have more to report after that.
Josh?
Um, enjoy the holiday season, Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, one meeting to finish up, um, December was the partnership of Douglas County governments, and with that was a preview to the legislative session that started this week. Um, it's a, it's a shift in the, uh, in the Capitol Building, uh, but I know we are very well-represented with, uh, great leadership from Senator Chris Holbert, um, Senator Jim Smallwood, and Representative Kim Ransum for the town of Parker. Um, I look forward to exciting year. Believe it or not, the press reports that there's always contention, but there is a lot of bipartisanship, bipartisanship that happens down at the Capitol, and all of the bills that have been sponsored recently have been bipartisan support, so, whereas the representative, representatives of Douglas County may be in the minority, I still look forward to a good year at the state Capitol.
Yeah, and then for me, as Cheryl mentioned, we have, uh, town council on Friday, we will have our annual town council retreat, and then on Saturday, uh, I'm part of a group called the Metro Mayors Caucus, it's forty-two of us mayors from the metro area. We meet once every two months to discuss issues that face the region and, and bounce ideas off of each other, it's kind of a cool opportunity. We have everything from mayors of Boulder and Aurora in Denver, big municipalities like that, down to the mayor of Beaumar. Do you guys know where Beaumar is? Raise your hand if you know where Beaumar is, a few people do, a few people don't. The town of Parker has four times the number of employees that Beaumar has citizens. And so it's kinda neat to be able to sit with someone like the size of Beaumar and talk about what issues that they're facing. Well, we have our annual retreat this Saturday, and it'll be here at the Pace Center, actually, so the other forty-one mayors of the metro area get to come down and see all the cool stuff that we have down here in Parker. So that's what I've got, um, all right, next up is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote, um, unless a council member has asked to have one removed for further discussion. So before us tonight, council, we have consent agenda items 7A through 7H. So moved.
Second?
Uh, they were too fast, I, I'd request for D through J.
Okay, so let's go ahead, before we do that, just to keep everything organized, go ahead and, if you guys will withdraw your, your motion, Josh?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, Jeff?
So I just asked for D through H to be pulled, for individual vote.
We have a motion from Jeff for items D through H to be pulled for individual vote?
Second.
We have a second from, motion from, uh, Jeff and a, I'm so used to calling names by just pointing them, so if I slip up and like, you know, call you Amy, that'll be, you know? Motion from Jeff and a second from Josh, so, council, please vote.
I gotta find the vote button.
Yeah, we don't have it.
Oh, new system.
Where's the vote button?
It'll come up, you gotta be patient, it'll come up. Or it's supposed, there it is.
So for clarity, Mr. Mayor, we are voting approval of A through...
No, 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 we're voting to have items D through H removed for individual.
Oops. How did I not?
Technology, right?
The first one.
First one out of the gate.
Right.
I mark that you all as voting yes.
Do we need hit save?
Four.
For removing the items D through H for individual votes, that was what the motion was.
Should we call?
No.
No, she's, are you gonna reset it for them to vote again?
I just...
I didn't.
Okay, so, but they didn't vote on it yet, so you need to cancel that one so they can actually take a vote on it. Because Cheryl, you didn't click on it yet, did you?
No.
Okay, so the item's up in front of you now, right? So everyone click, you're voting to remove items D through H for further, for individual motions and discussion.
But that's not what this says.
That's the motion that Jeff just made.
I think we should...
There will be reflected in a minute.
I think we should do...
Is it not coming up? Because I don't, so as, so you guys know what the, as mayor, I don't vote, so I don't see anything that they're seeing in front of them, is it not coming up?
This isn't, this is, this is a vote to pass consent agenda at all.
Okay, all right, so we're just gonna do a voice vote, and then we'll come back to this. So council, I need a motion, um, as stated by Councilman Toborg, to remove items D through H for individual discussion. We have a motion and a second for that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one opposition, five approvals, so the motion passes. Now, I'll need a motion for consent agenda items 5A through 5C.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee for consent agenda items 5A through 5C.
Put it back up.
It'll, it hasn't come up yet, it'll come up and just, she's gotta put it through now that the motion's been made.
Listen, she's not gonna be able to separate it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The first item that was pulled for discussion, I, so I'll need a motion on consent agenda item 5D or discussion.
So just as a point of reference, I just wanted D through H, um, for a separate vote so I could abstain, I, I don't have the background to, to vote.
Perfectly fine.
As my, as my new one, so.
Okay, so I'll need a motion.
We can vote in in a block, but...
It's up to you, you guys, I don't get to make motions, so if you wanna make a motion on...
I move to, uh, what's the word for that, Jim?
I'm just, I'm moved to approve consent items D through H.
I'm moved to approve consent items D through H.
Second?
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Debbie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, and I'll go to abstention. Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, we have two abstentions and four yeses, motion passes.
Mayor, for point of clarification, uh, I'm sorry?
Who's the second?
Two, Cheryl and Jeff.
So essentially, an abstention is an, is a decision not to vote. Under the town charter, you can't exercise your right not to vote unless you have a conflict of interest, so I think it's either a no or a yes.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm a no.
So two noes, motion passes four to two. Next item on our agenda is item 8A, this is a public hearing, this is, item 8A is for resolution number nineteen dash zero zero five. This is a resolution to designate a restricted parking area near Legend High School pursuant to section seven dot zero two dot one zero zero of the Parker Municipal Code. Tyler, you're gonna lead us through this, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you just graduated Legend like last year, right?
Ah, I went to Ponderosa.
I'm just kidding, oh! And no, he didn't graduate last year, people, it's a joke because he looks so young.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I'm gonna switch the screen for a minute, there you go. All right. I'm going to switch the screen for a minute. There you go.
Did it work?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. As many of you are aware, the town has received complaints regarding excessive use of on-street parking stalls adjacent to single-family residential lots. Having cars constantly lining the streets presents safety concerns as well as inconvenience to the residents. Now, I'm going to briefly talk about the ordinance, but if anyone, especially any of the new council members, have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you. On December 3, town council passed an ordinance to revise the town's municipal code pertaining to restricted residential parking. The code now allows for residents to request that their streets be permit restricted, provided that they are in close proximity to a non-residential high-traffic generator. Basically, anything that's traffic would typically be contained on-site but is spilling off-site. The permit zone being presented to council tonight has met all the requirements outlined in the code. In recent years, residents in Ottawa have noted large amount of Legend High School students parking on the highlighted streets. There have been multiple complaints and violations documented in these areas over the past couple of years, and the Public Works Department and the Police Department have confirmed that the parking shortage is being caused by students at Legend High School. On December 4 of last year, council directed the Public Works Department to send out mailers and ballots to the property owners in the affected area, and prior to the December 21 voting deadline, the Public Works Department received the consent of 81% of the property owners to take the restricted parking zone to town council. The restricted times are Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with the exception of town-recognized holidays. And if council adopts the proposed parking area, it will go into effect tomorrow, January 8. Just a quick rehash of the permit information. Permits are paid for and issued at the Police Department. They cost $20 each and need to be renewed every two years. Each residence can be issued up to three permits, and there are no conventional guest permits. The hangers that will be issued can be transferred to other vehicles or authorized guests of the property. The permits themselves are just plastic mirror hangers that have the permit zone and serial number on there, and each serial number is assigned to a certain address. And that concludes the presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for Tyler?
I was wondering if Tyler or Kristen maybe could walk us through, and new council walk us through what the ordinance was that we passed and what this resolution actually does for this specific area.
Yeah, I can, I can absolutely do that for you. The, so basically, I can just walk through the procedure here. The complaint is first filed with the Police Department or the Engineering Department. We then confer to determine if a consistent parking shortage is present. Basically, that's defined as 70% of all on-street parking stalls being occupied for more than two days, or, excuse me, it's two days a week, or two, two hours a day, three days per week, in front of at least five or more houses. The Engineering Department determines the limits of the proposed parking area. So if I go back to the screen here, the majority of complaints that we were getting were from Seasons Court, but in order to make sure that we didn't just press that issue onto the adjacent streets, we actually expanded to Ottawa Drive and Hidden Trail Drive. And the main requirement here is that you need to be within 1,500 feet of the nearest, what the code calls, a special generator. And like I said before, that's just a non-residential land use that's generating extra traffic. Once we go through all that, we send out a bailer, a ballot and a mailer to the affected property owners, and they vote on it by the deadline, and we require a 70% supermajority to move forward. And if, if 70% of the votes come in, which in this case we had 81%, we then take it to town council, as we are now, and we also send out an additional mailer to notify not only the residents in the proposed parking area but also adjacent residents, making sure that they're aware of the incoming parking changes. And the last thing is, we are allowed to administratively expand the parking area up to 300 feet or one block. This doesn't require council action, but we do allow the affected new property owners to vote, same as the other one.
Okay.
Okay, I have a-
Cheryl, go ahead.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One is, was the amount of the permit included in the ballot language when you went to a vote?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a particular problem in taxing people just to get the permit to park in front of their own residence. I don't think there should be a fee. They should have a permit but no fee.
Yes, and that is an option we explored, but the, there's really two reasons here. Part of it is to recover a portion of the cost. A permit parking area costs between $5,000 to $8,000 to implement, so we're not making the vast majority of the money back. And we also wanted to make sure that the people voting had more stake in the game, whether they, so they weren't just voting yes just for the sake of voting yes. They actually did want it. We wanted to make sure that the property owners really did want these.
I still stand on the fact that it's a double taxation, in my view. That should not be there.
Other questions, council?
I'd like to, to make a statement. So this has began, you know, full disclosure, I live in Ottawa. I do not live near this. I, like Cheryl, I'm sorry, Councilman Pogue, I was also against this, to say it lightly. In fact, we had meetings with the neighborhood. We had meetings with the school district. And in my point of view, back then, the idea was to get the school district to address this, to bring them to the table. We attempted. The principal's hands are tied. He's, he's got a building to worry about. He's got 2,300 kids to worry about. He can't, or he doesn't have the ability to deal with, with parking. The school district at the same time was running out of funding. They just were not responding to us. The situation was getting worse and worse, to put it lightly. I was still against it. I didn't want to see us put parking permits in our town of Parker. I didn't think that that was a route that made it a hometown feel. And I was up against it until August of last year. On the third day of school, on Monday, I drove by Seasons Court, and there were already cars parked on Seasons Court. This used to be a springtime issue. As more and more drivers would turn of age, they would get their licenses. They wouldn't have parking permits for Legend High School, and thus they would start to park in the neighborhood around Legend High School. It became at a certain point a matter of convenience and, and, well, this is definitely a safety issue, but it also, they're saving $100 for a parking permit because they knew they could park on, on the street and, and bypass the whole parking in the school lot. At the same time, if you ever see Legend empty out, it takes a while to get out of the parking lot. The kids that could walk to Season Court could get out and out of their cars quicker than the kids that are getting out of the parking lot. So again, even though I was against this, and I definitely see issues with, with charging residents to park on their own street, there needed to be buy-in. We needed to make sure. And as we see, even though all the residents were fully aware there'd be charges, 81% came back in favor of this, implementing this on themselves. The town didn't go and say, "Do this." They asked and came to the town and said, "How do we do this?" And this is the ordinance and thus the resolution that we're voting on tonight.
Okay. Other questions, council? John?
I mean, just a second. Councilmember Rivero's comments. So we talked a lot about this. We looked at different options. You know, I, I think for, for us as, as the council members, you know, for me, speaking personally, I, I don't know, I don't know if I accept a restricting parking area on its face. Again, we talked about buy-in. We talked about creating something new, something specific that only a certain few will, will benefit from because of an outside circumstance, the high school. So to me, I felt a little uncomfortable just creating a special, special program for somebody, but with, with the financial buy-in, it made me accept it more, and to me, I'm in support of this.
Council, other questions? Okay, then we'll open it up for public comment at 7:44 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address council on this item, this is your time. Same rules as before. Come on down. You've got a three-minute time limit. The clock above me. You'll state your name and address for the record, and after that, the clock will start rolling.
Good evening. My name is Terry Vosberg. I live at 12224 South Seasons Court, and I've been working this problem for many years. And I want to thank everybody involved who has listened year over year. They have watched the problem grow exponentially year over year, to the point where, I mean, truly, it was just a huge safety issue, and we have video, and we have examples of the trash and, and all the littering, even to the point where it's impacting home values. So I personally want to say thank you very much for supporting us, and thanks for the team over here for putting it together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up for public comment on this item? Hi. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jeannie Reslin. I live at 22425 East Hidden Trail. So right where your little map ends there is my house, and my neighbor's sitting with me across the street. I just heard about this recently. I really think you guys have a fiduciary responsibility to go back to the school district. I think it's wrong to permitting, and you're going to push all that parking down our street now instead of right where it was before. So I feel bad for the people in Seasons Court, but I also feel like they bought a house there. And I bought my house away from the high school purposely so I didn't have to deal with that parking issue. And so if you're trying to solve a problem, I think what you should be doing is going back to the school district and maybe even county commissioners to get something done there. We just heard about this. So I'm a little bit concerned about that, too, and I think you're going to get a lot of pushback. Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up for public comment? Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Stephen Curtis. I live at 22104 East Ottawa Drive in the Ottawa neighborhood. First and foremost, congratulations, Councilmember Williams, Toborg, and Pogue on your elections. We look forward to, to your leadership on the council. More importantly, the reason that I'm here, and, and I heard a number of words, both from, from Tyler, from Councilman Diak and Councilman Rivero, about buy-in. And I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Pogue over double taxation. I paid my tax this morning, $60 to get my three permits. I gave my comments early December on my need for actually more than three, but three's all I'm apparently entitled to. So I went and I bought them this morning. So what I'm asking now is, the council put their own skin in the game, and the town showed me buy-in. The town leases three-quarters of Tallman Meadows Park to Legend High School. The idea behind this is to get the parents of those children who have no place to park in front of the school board, the school district, the school administration to solve their parking problem. We've now displaced somewhere between 15 and 20 kids. They're going to move up the road to my neighbor, to my neighbor's house, up onto Meander, several other streets that you can see east of this permitted parking area. 15 to 20 students doesn't cut it. So I've made my investment. I put my skin in the game, and I'm asking the council now to cancel and/or not renew the lease of that park to Legend High School for use for student parking. That is the town's skin in the game, as it were, the investment the town is going to make in solving the ultimate problem, which is Legend High School has too many students and not enough parking. So I, I look forward to the town either canceling that currently or not renewing that come next school year and show your support for the support that 81% of the neighbors in Ottawa showed you over the restricted parking areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up for public comment? Name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Karen Swanberg, and I live on 12212 South Seasons Court. And I've lived there for three years, and the parking has been increasing dramatically in the last three years. We didn't, we were clueless about buying a house by, by a school, but I so am thankful for your concern, for your listening ears, and for working with us to solve a problem. And this is my first time with, working with government, and it's just exciting to see that you listen to residents, and I'm just grateful for all you've done, all the time and work you've put in, and I really appreciate that. I just feel like I have hope that I'm not going to wake up every morning in a parking lot. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:50 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion on item 8A.
I move to approve. Sorry.
Oh, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, gotta, gotta be quick.
Sorry, sorry. I'm learning.
Hmm?
Hand signals.
Very good.
All right. So two questions and a comment. So one, how was Mr. Curtis able to buy three permits today if this resolution has not been voted on and approved by the council?
The resolution was voted on last year, but the, to my knowledge, the permits were going to be available tomorrow, but they, the actual ordinance itself-
So Mr. Curtis is saying that he just bought three today. So how, what are we doing up here then, if they were just bought today without our approval of the process?
I don't know. I think the, I, I think the police station might have just jumped the gun a bit by a day.
Sure.
So it's a, so it's a great question, and the reason I acquired them today is because you're going to approve this this evening at a 7:00 PM meeting for an effective date of 7:00 AM tomorrow. There is no way between 7:00 PM tonight and 7:00 AM tomorrow that I can get permits from the Police Department. So I went to see if I could acquire them before, knowing that this has, in all likelihood, given 81% of the residents approving it, gets approved. But it is a, but it is a great question. And for the record, I was not the first to actually buy my permits. There were three issued prior to my arrival.
So my, my second question would be, Tyler, you stated that you can go on a 300-foot by 300-foot basis, right? So you can go block by block administratively?
Just to clarify, it's just one additional block added to each parking zone. We can't amend it a block, then amend it a block. It's just one block administratively.
Okay. So you, so once you, I think I'm reading this right. If you go on the south side of Hidden Trail Drive-
I'll pull them up.
-as your next 300 block, right? So you, you went, you, it's not the next, but you approved to the north, then that doesn't become the, the sticking point, then you can then go across the street to Meanderway. You can't go another 300 feet every time.
No, if we did, it's- If we did go, if we did go the administrative expansion route, we would go, you can see the intersection of Wendy Trail Lane, I believe that is, and that would be the, where permits, it would still be permits on A, and that's where that would terminate. But if anyone past that wanted to go, they would have to go through the whole formal process that I outlined earlier.
So coming back to us, asking for approval, and not issuing permits until we said it was permissible?
That is correct.
Point well taken. My last point is, I, I do agree with Councilwoman Pogue, a double taxation on these neighbors. I, I agree, I agree to the buy-in. I agree to, to saying, would you be willing to pay a fee if we did this? But actually, causing Mr. Curtis, these neighbors, these other neighbors who will certainly come and ask for a permit to be in neighborhood, $20 to park in front of their house while they're paying taxes, revenue taxes in our community is, I, I can't support that. But I do support the concept of, of Seasons Court and, and all the other yellow. I do, I'm a Legend dad. I've got a driver there who doesn't park there because I make him go to school early. And I got another one coming up. So I do whole, whole, support your cause, 100%. I just think the taxation is-
Cheryl?
Yeah, a couple of things. I wanted clarification on daytime parking, because you're limiting each family to three, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the option for guest passes for special occasions?
Depending on the size of the special occasion, the hangers that can be given, that will be issued, can be transferred to authorized guests, so-
But we may need more than three cars.
But real quick, Cheryl, Tyler, if you can explain for the new council members the time period, this isn't a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week restriction on parking in front of their house, correct?
Thank you, ma'am. It's, so the restrictions on time, this isn't the Legend High School ordinance, but in this case, we tailored it to Legend High School's schedule because that's the special generator. So it's 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
So Saturday at 6:00 PM, nobody needs a permit to park on the street in front of their house?
That is correct.
Okay, what I was referencing to were the restricted times. So you might have social occasions at your home where you need more than three spaces for parking. It happens at my home every weekend.
Absolutely.
So my question is, are there options for them to go get a one-time permit for special guests?
As the ordinance is written now, there is not. And we, we've spoken with some of the people who came up for public comment. I know there's a sewing club out there, and as the ordinance is written now, if your guests pass the three permits that you're issued, they could be issued a citation. Having said that, the, this enforcement is complaint-based. The, the community services is not going to be out there actively patrolling. It'll be one neighbor saying, "I don't recognize that car," and them calling. It'll be one neighbor saying, I don't recognize that car, and them calling. That, and once again, that being said, this is our, our first crack at this. Our, our idea was to design a, a simple, easy-to-follow ordinance that can be tweaked to our needs later. And if that does become an issue, if, if unmarked nanny vehicles become an issue, we can absolutely amend the ordinance later.
Well, I've encountered many situations living in Parker where I need more than three spots during the timeframe that you have prohibited with the permit parking for three. So with that in mind and the fact that it's double taxation, I would like to suggest you go back and redraft it.
Josh? And then John?
Yeah. Thank you for touching on the, on the complaint-based and, and reactive ordinance versus a proactive ordinance. We don't, we're not employee meter maids to drive around and, and patrol the neighborhood. I know that my neighbor to the north, the Cooks, their daughter draws, drives a black MDX. I know that my, the, the mother-in-law to my neighbor to the south drives a silver Camry. I know what people drive around me. I know my neighborhood. I know what the kids who park in my neighborhood, I know what they drive. And I know what the high school kids that park in my neighborhood, I know what vehicles they drive. We are in control, again, of our own areas. And I believe that even though we consider, continue to use the, the taxation word, I believe that this is a local control issue. We have taken this issue and dropped it down to the simplest form. These citizens, in a democratic process, have voted to do this with over a supermajority, 81%. We didn't come in and say, here, we're going to tax you twice. We said, if you want to implement this, this is what it's going to cost you. That is what they agreed to do. Again, I was against a $20. Again, I believe that it is, it's, it's not a buy-in, it's a public street. But my ideology aside, the fact is, in order to get considerations made and to get council to agree to change the ordinances in the town to public parking, this is the route that they decided to go. And so that resolution, that resolution's on the books. That ordinance is on the books. This resolution simply actifies the first area, hopefully last, but the first area in that ordinance.
John?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to talk a little bit about this, this double taxation. Was there a consideration of going out for an RFP to kind of provide a service to, to do something like this? Because I mean, to me, my concern is, we want our staff to work efficiently for the greater good, for as many people as possible. This is what I would call sort of a special issue, special process. But you had a, you had a cost, I think it was what, $8,000, $6,000 to $8,000? Is that correct?
Yep.
If, if we got, if, if we didn't administer it and we took it out to RFP, would there be somebody out there who wants to administer it, administer it for $6,000 to $8,000? Because $6,000 to $8,000, it would seem though there wouldn't be a, a partial, partial person who could implement this with that efficiency. So could you please speak to maybe the concern of going out for a third party? Because if, if, if that's the concern of double taxation, we can certainly bring that out for proposal. And if we can't find someone for $6,000 to $8,000, then it's sort of up to us as the lowest cost provider to maybe reconsider that.
Yeah. I don't imagine that we could find an RFP where we could get that same sort of cost efficiency as you ordered it. But if that is council's direction, we'd be happy to pursue that, that course.
Debbie and Renee? Questions?
Can I ask you? Councilman Dyak, what, what would the point be of going out for, to secure 54 homes for a permit to go out to a subcontractor? I, I mean, I think that we could, you know, you're, you're looking at Kinko's for 200 bucks for placards and.
Sure.
We're done. I, I.
No.
I guess, I guess I don't understand the, the question of we'd farm it out to a subcontractor.
Well, I, I'm, I'm hearing the concern is double taxation. And I mean, to me, I view this as something, a service or an amenity that the, the town is providing. One which, on its face, if you're asking me to do it, I don't want to do it. But to me, the benefit, the buy-in for the people who want this, it seems to me that, you know, it, it doesn't make sense to go out to an RFP. But to me, if, if that is the concern, we can certainly explore that option if, if that'll move, move it forward in your eyes.
I, I think sometimes just doing the right thing right is, and, and issuing three placards to a household and calling it good. I, to alleviate the congestion at Seasons, so.
I move to approve resolution number 19-005.
Motion by Josh and we have a second by John.
I move to call.
The vote should be up on your screen here in just a sec. If you're still logged into. Not coming up? All right. All in favor? Is it there now? Okay. Oh, our screens went off. These ones?
Debbie and Josh?
Yep.
Debbie and Josh?
Mine was already marked.
Yep. Oh, I see. Got it.
No, they're colored, they're color-coded.
Oh, but you got to hit the save thing.
Okay. Motion passes with four yeses and no from Jeff Toborg and no from Cheryl Pogue. With no further business before council, we will adjourn at 8:01 PM and reconvene our executive session in just a couple of minutes.